Welcome, this is the Dyson Historical Commission meeting on December twelfth. It's now six oh four, it looks like.
Yeah.
Um, we're at Old Town Hall and it, this meeting is being recorded and will be available on on Dyson's YouTube channel. The listing of matters are those recently anticipated by the CHLA were to be discussed then. Maybe not all items listed may have to be discussed. And other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to be sent permitted by law. Okay, and we are forward tonight. Um, Pat Gales, Chair.
Rafa Delton, Secretary. That, uh, Karen member. Irene Allen member.
All right, and we do have a forum. Um, let's see after the pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Secretary is recording from October tenth, twenty twenty three. Anyone have any additions, amendments?
I did not.
Okay, I'll enter P M motion to approve the minutes of October tenth, twenty twenty three as submitted.
My motion that we approve the meeting minutes from September twenty three as it's as submitted. Second.
Okay, more than may seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote, all in favor? Anyone's surprising me, yes. All right. Um, next is the budget. Our balance for FY twenty four is one thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. Our number balance is two hundred and sixty per C A I with a max. And I'm gonna check with them to see if there is one more invoice because they did some work and I don't know if they included that in the first invoice that they give. I don't wanna make sure that we're all clear with them. Um, and our second gains and gift account balance is to say five thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and three and four cents. Just to note, January will begin our budget planning for FY twenty five. And that's usually pretty. We did zero baseline checking last year. I haven't heard anything else yet. So, under unfinished business, um, the time capsule, oh no.
Yep.
Yeah, the time capsule. So I did, I talked with the crusties about, um, the storage for the time capsule and they're willing to work with us on storing it when Smith Memorial Hall opens. Um, you know, so that's a good thing.
I do have a comment on that, so, um, I went to the Somerset Historical Society. Get out, I was there, hello, I wasn't even showing it. Oh my god, Zach. You guys can suck the thing alive. I was so excited when I saw, I didn't wait, John told this, did you need John Larson? Yes, okay, yeah, he plays soundboard. Oh, I'm probably sitting down, oh, sorry, sorry. Tom, I'll be your show to us. I mainly had a bigger, so, um, so this. But I know. So, this is their time capsule. Yes. So, it's behind glass and all the slots there are like people, whether it's a person, a commission, whoever. So the nice thing about it is that it's behind glass, you can't see anything. Um, and something like this, I'm sure we could find a group, a school who will help build or donate supplies or something like that because it's not something that we need to go or go to an empty shop and buy an arm, but buy an old desk. It's an awesome, that's an old trash. And then, and then also just work to copy, but.
We have things over in separate schools.
I mean, that looks like an old, that looks like an old mailbox, right? An old, like, mailbox.
We have some cabinets that we're donating to the town, remember those last cabinets? There is a big, um, drawer thing there that has the box toys. So we made have something on the side.
So.
Does it open so you can take out and look at?
It's kind of, it's like a combination of what we're talking about where um, you can see inside of it. So like down here, so these are all like, on like, you can't just go in there, open up whenever you want and see what's something put in there. But there is a way that, let's say, you can, you could, with my thinking, you could add to it kind of throughout, not that, obviously, that kind of, you wouldn't wanna be adding things every other month, but like, let's say a month later, something goes, oh my god, I have a bunch of stuff I should have put in there. Well, there's a way that you can get into it if you wanna make some last minute adjustments kind of thing. So I think this is some kind of letter from the Foundation for Historical Commission and then these are, you know, it might say Bank of Somerset. Or it's, you know, John and Joe Smith, who have a bunch of things they wanna submit. So, I mean, it's, so this is plexiglass, it's kind of hard to, so like, I, I, I I intentionally took this picture with the glare so you could see that this whole thing right here is covered, is all behind glass or a kind of plexiglass kind of thing. So it's a kind of a combination of what we're talking about and I do kind of like that you can see, it's almost like an advent calendar where you can like see the stuff behind there, but you can't look at it yet, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, so they have a date that they're gonna open all of those things at?
Yeah, during July fifteenth, first week.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, and that's, you know, whatever, whatever they chose to do, so. Um, I think, not saying we could do this exact thing, right? Oh, I saw that, I was like, oh my god, this is what we, this is what we're, we've all kind of been throwing ideas around. But I can't believe that she did mention it because she went to the Circle Commission of Somerset a few months ago. So I was getting to see it, it is kind of, it's not super prominent. It's in like, uh, some, one of the rooms against the wall and you would have to be, like, no one pointed out well, that's just a tour, I just happened to stumble upon, I was like, wait a second.
Well, this is, the entire Somerset Historical Society is, is how it's right in this old village school.
Yeah, they have been doing a lot of, I guess, it didn't have any markers. No, they don't. I, I, I don't think it was in the right spot either when I went, I thought a month ago, but.
I know where it is, yeah. That, that's a very interesting idea.
And the size of it can do whatever you want, I mean, we can do half the size. You can do, you don't have to do it as tall as you know, Mark said. But the fact that it's like behind glass, almost like a museum piece,
Yeah.
but it's not like on a, you know, the basement somewhere, touching dust.
Exactly.
Of nice underground. For that.
So, we can kind of, look, I think we should take a look at what's over and available at the schoolhouse that's being stored. And then, I know there's not really any plans for some of that. And there's some glass cabinets from Good Society that were given to the town. Um, I don't know if those would be appropriate, but there is some furniture there that we might be able to use as a base to build from.
Or even like, I mean, I have an old roll top desk that my parents bought when they first got married, they painted from some place in Fall River, I mean, no, it was like a bunch of old, you know, I don't know if that, uh, that was just a old thing, but a place like that, I'm sure they're probably, but, I don't know, said that, oh, you're right, went to San Diego. They out of some painting and barns it themselves, but I mean, this could almost be as expensive or inexpensive as you want. Do we want?
The whole thing about the slots of school.
I know, I kind of, I kind of love the charm to it. Because this, like, if, if this was in their basement, I don't think you would need to have it as charming as it says, but because this is almost on display, it, it's kind of nice.
But there's no lettering of what it is.
No, 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 so like, I'm gonna show you. So for example.
Oh, they do have this slot.
So you could, you can kind of see as much as you want here in, so this says Harold and Beth King. So if you were to really strain your neck, you can maybe see that, oh, that looks like the Time Magazine cover. But yet you can't see what's in that envelope, you have no idea what's in that envelope. Now is there an inventory index kind of somewhere, trough, you know?
It's just like another envelope, it's chock a lot full of stuff.
Right, and then like, that, that little, I kind of like it because like that little vase thing, I don't know what that is, I don't know what that means to them, but.
Piece of pottery of some kind.
And if people, like, we don't have to do this exact thing, like, people don't wanna put their names there, that's, that's obviously fine. Because like, if you can see, they kind of have like a second section like down here, we can just put names that what if people just.
Like bar and that or something.
Right, I mean, I think this is so customizable. They, and this is good because based on what we get, we can, like, okay, this is what we have. How do we, like, range this and what?
Yeah.
You, we're not, we're not bound to, okay, we bought this six, five, four container. That's all we got, guys, hopefully it fits, knock that wood. As opposed to this where it's like, well, we can fold it up and we put it off the sign, we can stack some things. I think that's.
I like the little slot thing, you could like roll something up and put them in the little slots.
Right, exactly, I mean, so I mean, if you think about how tall that is.
It doesn't have to be that big.
No, of course not, no, absolutely not. Three, four, or something. Right, based on how, like, they, if you look, none of these slots are empty. I have this, you know, this one up top that has a name, but I can't tell if something's in it or not. Um, but again, like, we can keep things blank, like, let's say the, I don't know, the school committee is gonna submit stuff, but they don't, they aren't ready. You can put D R school committee, but keep that smart empty until they're ready to submit hypothetically, or, you know, whoever.
Right, so we talked about this being for the, the historical commission fifty for twenty twenty three. So we wanna collect all of the items for twenty twenty three from different departments and different organizations. You know, with that, what were the meanings?
Oh, I don't really know how they did that, I, I think like, so I did see some names and then I saw like okay, so for example, one of these names says, um, Mac and Beth Matardi. But then one says Church of Our Savior. So because of that church group puts stuff in there, but then some cells were just a husband and wife that put stuff in there. One of them is, uh, USPS, the post office Somerset, the post office puts stuff in there. But it's right next to, like, this guy puts up, is that really? Like, just one person submitted it.
Can you two go back there and ask them how they set it up?
Absolutely.
My, my only concern is that compared to traditional time capsule, this, again, when you see everything, there's no mystery, there's no, there's.
You recall an envelope.
But see, the whole thing, the whole thing about not seeing it is depending on where we're gonna put it. If it was going to be put in the vault somewhere, yeah, it can, you can see or not, it's gonna be involved until we open it fifty years from now. But if we wanted to display it, almost just putting a, like a.
It's not really a time capsule, it's more like a, you say.
I'm vague over the time capsule?
That's what I extended the definition, it might be right there.
Maybe a modification.
And when I go back there, if you want, I can zoom in on what exactly, like, that, uh, folded letter, kind of like there, is more detail about this piece and this project. If this is something we wanna consider, I don't mind going back there and like looking at that more closely to see what they exactly down, tied there, but but I think we're using the whole time.
And there, there are reasons they have people is because they're the society versus the commission, you know, so their historical society is, is the historical society, anyone that's holding that and building that.
Right.
So at a nonprofit, they would take things from families and, and all of that, you know, this, this slight difference, whereas the permission is like a little bit more government.
True, that's a good point, that's right.
So, but that doesn't say you cannot do the same thing, you know.
Or if you wanna be anonymous, you don't have to put your name there.
Right, and it'll be in the envelope and when.
If you're just like, you know, like, we could have just one drawer or something, or one cupboard or something, that is just stuff that people don't want their names on there or something. But I think the whole thing about, I know you're saying the whole mission behind it, but I think nowadays, like, I, when I enter time capsule, I don't think this either. That's not what I think of, I think of what D R I had buried in the ground for, for, like, I opened it in two thousand and five or something like that. That's what I think of when I take a time capsule. But I think nowadays it's kind of whatever, and also based on whatever we get.
Yeah, right.
I think maybe intended by the same, this is a stack of post office parks identifying itself as a time capsule.
Right, right, you could put a tube off underneath the capsule, you could put a tube off underneath the mat, underneath the board of the.
Under my bed, it's a time capsule, right?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna see, be here to see it. So, um.
I can actually send you this picture and anything else that I see too.
Yeah, and, you know, I can think, let's gather some more information, we have to also decide.
It's something for the Dyson Society.
Well, it's not their project, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna say it's not their thing, but I mean.
I live a, I live small house.
Doesn't have a circle society of Somerset, it doesn't mean the Dyson Historical Commission can't do this.
No, I think we can do it and I think.
Or something like it, obviously.
You know, if we start, we have to focus on asking for donations again to, you know, to it, maybe, um, create, you know, a letter or thank you to say, you know, since your year has ended, is there anything memorial that you would like to consider? You know, donating to our time capsule, whether it be, um, from, you know.
Have less than two weeks and a half.
Yeah, definitely work on it in twenty twenty four because, you know, two and a half.
Spring's waiting, people are gonna be coming back, that's true.
So maybe we can draft a letter, like, looking for a donation.
And I think people knowing what is going to go in might be more of a draw, when I said, okay, you want me to use them for something, photos that you're gonna watch, seven of bots and put in the town hall vault? Or, oh, you wanna put on an envelope, it's gonna be like, so you're gonna walk by and see and wonder every day. Yeah, sure, I'd like to give you guys a pair of photos, you know, you, I think that the charm of it maybe would bring more interest of people, people, you know, sparking some, I, sparking some interest in possibly donating stuff.
Yeah, because we're only making a whole lot of interest as far as people donating things.
Yeah, which is very disappointing.
Yeah.
Well, we, we gotta blow it up, I mean, I'm, like, we gotta rethink, once we know what it's gonna be, I think part of it is our uncertainty as to what we're gonna do with it, where it's gonna go. I think maybe hindered our wondering what to ask for.
Yeah, yeah.
But once we know, hey, this is what's gonna go, you know, that might.
Kind of become into the library.
Right. That's, 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 that's more, more of that master where it's gone to, to.
Or if it's gone to the furniture.
Right, that's what's great about this is that, like, it.
We can even think of any of those, right, time capsule.
And like, God forbid, this, this could be moved. I mean, it's an outlaw or something like that, you mean, like, you know, if we decided for whatever reason or change rooms, if something construction needs to be done or something, as opposed to, okay, well, that's in the ground, good luck getting that out, you know what I mean?
Obviously, there is a question, right? So we have to temporarily put everything in the town vault.
And that, that's the problem until this is resolved.
Right, right. So we can collect.
Okay, so to twenty two, twenty, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four then?
Yeah. Because right now with Christmas being this close, there's what, all those, like, no one, this is not gonna be an end before, like, there.
Correct.
Understand yourself, obviously, but I wouldn't want that to be a reason why we're getting off either, because we forced it within three weeks, you know what I mean? Uh, what they are the weeks they're open, but.
They open on Saturdays?
I think so.
All right, so we can, like.
I don't like morning, I mean, I can go this, if they're open, I can go this, this, uh, this Saturday.
Okay, well, good, well, that's kind of exciting, actually. Anything else on the time capsule for now? Don't put it on, you can think of January, we'll get some more information. Um.
I'm sorry, so according to the maps, they're open Monday through Friday, eight thirty to four.
Wow.
It says Saturday and Sunday they're closed. And I do have some sort of, like, I'm gonna go.
Um, do we wanna work on, like, a letter or some publicity? And the statement again?
Sure, I can do it. Standing deadline.
Standing.
We're still accepting.
We're still accepting, you know.
You may mention, like, you know, the, 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 the final final, let's see, resting spot of the final work, it's not, but it's final, the final, the, the, the definite home for our time capsule is becoming, it's not definite yet, but it's becoming more and more definite. And may stay tuned in the months to come for what it will look like or something, you know, along those lines.
Because on your, like, okay, we talked about some of the, um, events inviting that were in the newspaper and I could get those archived, you know, John gave it to Zach, that's easy.
A strawberry.
We have that strawberry, my newsletter, we can save. I just, but I can save some. Um, yeah, didn't, um, Laura gave us one, didn't she? I think she did. But we can work on that, if not, we can get copies from them. Preserving Memories of Dyson. It's next. So Zach, I found this book.
I know, I kept looking for it, it was checked out now, but I know it's evident. It's where I got, it's still up right now, it says checked out, I know it was evident.
Yes, I just looked from the library, remember the World History Manual?
I do love those, I think.
It packs a wonderful, you know, Zach is working on the forms and things for the donors and has wonderful suggestions. It has a lot of information and I am recommending that we buy this with the commission, I was stealing your thunder tonight. Um, I think it's, you know, not only does it help with the forums, but it, it talks about how to do interviews, it talks about uh, ethics, it, you know, just all kinds of things that we will need if we're gonna go, as we go forward with this program. Um, doing the interview, the releases and even coverage, which I never found, is the release for the person doing the questioning, having them sign a release, you know, um, because it is their their conversation too, so.
So you can buy new paperback on Amazon for forty-six seventy-four.
Right. And the town.
It's, it's like a textbook. Oh, well, it's, you know, I think that's why I found it, because it's the article in the.
Yes. So, um, we can buy through the town. I don't know, do you wanna take a look at it, we're putting before we.
Because I, I, I was looking online for a, uh, a Kindle version or a, the ebook version, and I'm like, but it's a manual, you almost wanna take notes and write in it, that's why I was like, that's why I was like, I don't wanna library book, I don't wanna ebook, I want the hard copy at this point, this, because I wanna be able to like highlight or it's, it's like a workbook, this kind of thing, you know what I mean?
To still copy it too. Stuff like that.
Yeah, that's what I wanna do, I wanna buy something with the town money, let me destroy it, that's, that's what, that's what I'm like, such a historical.
You make it look, so, um, you know, I think it's a valuable tool that we have.
Do you need a motion to spend the money on that or?
Yeah, so I would entertain looking not going to exceed fifty dollars. Sometimes Amazon's prices fluctuate up here and that, yeah.
Yeah, so like literally right now, it's forty-six seventy-four, it's seven percent off.
Yeah.
And if, it's, uh, shipping is, uh, free with Prime, if you have.
Yeah, I think that, I think it sounds good.
And you can buy, buy, I mean, combine used in very good condition for thirty-three eighty-one.
Yeah.
So. It's like, it's, uh, yeah, so it's right now, it's, so it was, with a seven percent off, it's fifty dollars even on Amazon, but right now it's forty-six seventy. Like, like, you can play it right now, so, okay.
All right, so, um, I'm only being a motion to purchase the oral history manual, uh, which price not to exceed fifty dollars.
Uh, is that including shipping or not, if you don't get free shipping? So we can.
Okay, yeah, we promise. I do get free shipping, but I'm not sure.
With the town account?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure though. Um, not to exceed from, for the forty-six seventy-four plus twenty.
Okay, yeah, so I want a motion that we purchase the oral history manual, um, the town account, not to exceed the forty-six seventy-four, uh, not to exceed. Second.
Plus.
Question, a question, sorry, yes, yeah.
All right, well, we have a motion to purchase the book for forty-six seventy-four, that's the thing. Um, so, all in favor?
Yeah.
I can do that tomorrow. Did you work on any forms from that, or?
I did, but if we get that, that's gonna change the whole order.
Okay.
Like, not, I mean, it's, I'm sure I'm gonna get so much water in that house, so.
Um, the other thing is, we have email.
Yes, about the storage, right?
Yeah, about the storage. Um, so the I T, sound like you guys, says that, um, would be best to do a flash drive at this time, an idea, which will also back up to some sort of cloud server, Google Drive or OneDrive. And Laura on that, um, Kable, who we had responded earlier to, she suggested that um, to have a, a second one or digital platform like YouTube. Um.
So I guess the when I read those emails, I think they were thinking we were asking how to, we knew how, like, the whole flashlight thing is what we're trying to avoid, because that, that gets lost or broken or something, but that's it was more the question, so like, like you were saying, you suggest, you know, Google Drive or something, yes, we know the question was about which account, like, is there, is there a town account?
Okay.
Because if you think about it, all the agendas that get posted online, the PDFs of all the book bylaws, that all has to get stored digitally somewhere, so the town must have some kind of digital storage account. That's what we need to know as part of, like, do we have, do we, as a circle, have access to that? If so, how we go about using that? If they say no, then, okay, then can we make our own account and then how does that fall under, you know, town, whole town property, who manages it? So that's the, the more we, what we were trying to figure out from them.
So Zach, would you first find the I T guy here?
Yeah, I, I did see them, I just didn't wanna o- overstep and start commuting, okay, but you're okay with that, I certainly will, yeah.
Um, to follow up on that and so if you need more clarity on all that.
Absolutely.
All right. I was thinking that somebody said, if you would say, like, some videos that to work on it and will report to us. You know, like you do the house markers, and we all wanna be involved in everything.
We're just starting a meeting, all right, so, quite an agenda.
Yeah, it is.
The, the house markers, I can have, something like that.
Um, what I'm thinking is, you know, like, we have the board or D P H committee, I'm thinking like, you know, and we have our preserving memories committee. Did we have, uh, or should this continue working at D R? I don't know what you're thinking about, because I don't know.
I mean, I will be involved however much the board wants me to be. And then say, if you guys say, hey, can you just do this, you get back to us, I will do that, if you want me to just sit there and just tell you what you want me to do, you know, I'll do that. Whatever, wherever anybody wants.
All right, so we'll just continue on, you know, it's.
Let's, that's the thing, I was, I was talking about that, so that's, I'm not overstepping, but I also wanna tell them, oh, I'll do whatever you guys want me to do, like. At least like the name, that's kind of what, when I came on.
I'm delegated. All right, next is America's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. So far, Arna has agreed to be on the committee to tell the story.
Oh, lovely.
Ray, Ray Hay from the Veterans, since the Veterans Agent. The community church representative will be Karen Potter. So, um, I have two people that are considering that large number positions.
Oh, wow.
Um, I do have a contact with the, um, the Minutemen, but I don't think they have positive that they wanna be part of, to make a difference for the whole of it. But, um, he has a connection to it, he, uh, also twenty-two people.
But they have they say, well, they, they, they.
No, no, but they have their, really, most probably.
Yeah.
But, um, one of the large people is Rich Funder, um, yeah, he's been around and he's very active in the Minutemen, but he's also very, you know, this. Um, the board of selectmen have this on their agenda for part, like, to, that they make their person. Um, it should be also a belonging for the department head of the committee.
That's gonna be tough for the selectmen because, by the way, is it who's chair of the other? They're like, what happened, they, they selectmen, they don't, they don't, they're not, like, we have.
Somebody.
They have, they, they sign.
Yeah, because they do that one week, you know, someone.
Oh, right, that's, right, that's true, right.
Um, and we need to designate someone to be on the anniversary committee. So.
Somebody's not here. Well, Sharon. Tell you. I'm Sharon, I mean, hey, she doesn't. I'm Sharon, I mean, hey, you don't, don't get me.
I mean. Um. I don't mind doing it. Maybe because I'm kind of like, like.
You want to do it?
I don't, yeah. Yeah.
Was it, was it a question? No, that, that was a genuine question. You know you want to do it.
Assume that there's somebody else that wants to do it too, that's perfectly fine with me.
All the things you have going on, it's not the one I'm most passionate about, so if someone else wants this. Yes, I'm a. Share knowledge. Then I, there's a lot more thing on our list that I more time, no, that's. I'll fill everybody's.
And I don't know how much is gonna be involved, and I hate to say I do it and then end up saying I just, yes.
I think it's sort of going to be a member. This is not me technically anymore, so.
Now, didn't you install the society cap? Oh, yeah, yes, and.
Don't need to receive.
Your man said that too. So, might be talking about today too, so, um. I mean, I don't mind, I don't like to designate someone that's not going to say yes. So often, I just keep loving, right?
Attend your meeting. Zach, how would you make that? What'd you learn? I learned that Pat, that Pat delegates who is in is not there.
You know, I don't know how much is gonna be involved. Like I say, with things going on at home, I hate to say yes, I'll do it and then have to step back. I will help you if you.
Right, okay, alright. Cause I would say all the town involvement, the social commission and or the society, probably the biggest one involved, as opposed to the selectman committee, not hypothetically. I think like, it's the, you know, I think for the heart of the student board, that's gonna be the biggest.
Yeah.
On, on their plate one time.
So there's a meeting.
The library maybe. Volunteers.
I think as we have these designated committees on a committee, then they're gonna have to reach out to other people, you know, if it's. You have to have a poor group that's working on it, and that poor group can't be huge.
You have to cook in the kitchen. The whole point of the poor group that talk to others, not.
Talk to others, and, you know, spread the word, express assistance on certain things, you know, um. Because otherwise, if you have fifteen, twenty people on it.
Will it be an actual committee? Like, like an actual fund, not a fund, but it, okay, would.
It probably will have to be funded at some point for activity, yeah.
Which means they would have to write a lawsuit to the selectmen to be able to. And we get a share and advice on like.
Right, alright.
CPC money? What's that? CPC money?
It's historical, I don't know, I have to look at the guidelines, yeah. Is it, their guidelines are. They're, they're pretty specific, so, uh anyway, so. I want to pay a motion to.
I will, I'll have a motion to nominate. To be our point person. For the two hundred fifty, two hundred fiftieth anniversary for the historical commission.
Second. Okay, motion on the floor, and yeah, on the discussion. We'll vote. And I will abstain voting. That passes, majority. And like I said, if you need assistance. Yeah, oh, I'll be asking for, you know, if you can't go to a meeting or something, I'm available.
Awesome, yes.
Thank you. Alright, so. Preservation planning. I know, so we have our response from that historic commission to evaluate, help, thank you for providing a force for eligibility. To the National Register and the Brick Area Forum, excluding the Hattie Cemetery, is eligible for consideration. Uh to the National Register of Historic Places under criteria and say yay.
I, I think it's crazy, because I was talking to my dad, we talked about. I had said at dinner, of all the areas that Dyson has submitted, I thought Braker was going to be the least likely, personally. But then I thought, you know, Luther's Corner in Swansea has four property, literally four properties.
Right.
That are involved, and I said, I thought, oh, maybe, but so when I started looking up about that one, I said.
So, I also from, the eligibility statement that, um, Stacey has put in was under criteria A. Which is historical events under, I believe, for the National Register. Um, and C is. The design construction, the distinctive characteristics of the buildings there, so, um.
Yeah, I'm a criteria.
Right.
Okay.
So, I mean, so now we have to figure out where do we go from here. Uh, also in the letter. We, there more work needs to be done on the South Dyson area form to add some things. Uh it's gonna include the farm shipyard, some additional properties, you know, so we have to take a look at that.
So. I know the circle districts throughout time increase and decrease boundaries, like, kind of the reference one has and stuff like that. If we were to include corn, would that, would corn become, would that be absorbed into one, or would corn always stand alone by itself?
I'm not sure, I.
I wanted that.
Yeah, I would think that it would stand alone, because it's already been identified as one. You know, and it would just add, become a part of the self, um, Dyson one, but that's a good question. I think there's a lot.
Cause I think Boston's some overlap. Oh, I, I mean, Boston, Boston, I mean, do you know what I mean, like, I mean. I think, like, the Custom House District probably overlaps a little bit with.
Right.
You know, north of, um, kind of saying, or like even. What's it called, the streets that are like, uh. The old streets that were like, shut it to me, like now, it's like right where the Oyster House is. There's a set of, there's a set of streets there that are a preserved district, but that's right within the Custom House District. But it stands alone, even though it's within that too.
So, given the response to this area form, I'm just really excited.
Yeah.
Um. What I would like to do is have a separate meeting where the only thing on our agenda is to talk about these area forms. And the National Register of Historic Places. I think. It's very involved, because even the one for lower form corners, we asked about making it smaller, we could do that, we have to give them the map, so there's work that can be done.
Yeah, I mean, I picked it up, all this stuff. It, it almost reminded me of like zoning in forty B. We could spend until ten o'clock at night, not one district, one two.
Right.
So we almost, like, I would agree with you, we almost do need those who want to participate. We need a second special meeting.
I think, yeah, I, I think to schedule some of those meetings.
With the intention of going and saying, guys, we could be here tonight, kind of, it's, I'll honestly maybe pick, you know, narrow down to get closer, what was happening, so we're not talking all seven things or any one meeting, but I, I agree with you.
You know, so that we have time to go through the forms, answer the questions that we have. You know, brainstorm about where we go.
Especially with these updated things too, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, updated ones, um, and just got recommendations in here, um. You know, for the National Register and also.
My, my hope's been up here, I mean, this, oh, this, oh, I mean, it's a great thing, it's a good bottom to have.
Right.
But I mean, it's, it's, it's becoming, it does need its own separate. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent.
Right, so, um. Our January meeting is January ninth, I believe. Yes, uh so we can bring, maybe bring some gates that would work for people, and then we can find a space to meet. At dates and times.
It should generate.
Uh, yeah, it should be, did I say that again?
Yeah, I know, I remember that, that would be old.
I, I don't do that. I know, I know.
We're all getting old. And I like, you know, obviously we can probably talk, get closer, but like, if you start at six, I would almost like, like, suggest that you plan, like, hey, at, at seven o'clock, we'll have a recess, or.
Yeah.
Or, or say, we're discussing one district tonight, but then that means we're gonna have, what, seven of these meetings, so we have to, once we get. Who's gonna, who wants to do it, who can do, we get.
Right, we can figure that out.
Out of, out of town accounts.
Because, um. If it's only like, not, not a quorum of people there, that's fine, but the few people can also come back and make a recommendation to the.
Right, it's more destruction, that's fine, it's like, it's more like that, what, what, what do they call it?
You wouldn't have to post that.
Work session.
I would post it, just in case people are, are.
It's, like, I know, it's, for, for these work sessions, where it's like, you know, there's like a board, I think it's for the. For forty B, if you're going ever, you might go, you're the only motion, you know, it's more just, like, cashing things out, and then they bring it back, it's not, it's not recommissioned, it's not on you. It's more just, you know, because not everyone can do three or four meetings, not, for, for zone, what I say, so.
But we have so much information on these forms, you know, that we need to look at, and like, where are we gonna go? What are the priorities going to be, you know, for, do we want to, you know, add the information we submit? Do, you know, where it's from the brick area, where do we go from here, you know, so.
I, I certainly don't mind if there's a way to do it, I'm sure there is, we can find somewhere with a. Screen. Or, like, like a projector screen, I certainly don't, I think a lot of this stuff is somewhat more beneficial digitally. If you open up tabs and want to see pictures side by side, you know, that kind of stuff, if that.
Well, you can do it here, even like here.
Right, but I mean, like, I mean. If we have a bigger screen that we can all see, as opposed to like a laptop or a small thing, you know, I certainly don't mind. Making that happen, as long as we can find, as long as whoever we're doing has a way to do that.
Yeah, cause it.
Because we're going to think of all these papers, which is great, so I like papers and hard copy things too, but when we, when you're working, it's almost like. You, when things get scattered, it's almost kind of good to have it, especially when we're showing something on the screen, hey, guys, look what I found, or what about this, you wanna highlight something? Rather than passing it around or something, you know what I mean?
Alright, reading where I found that.
Definitely.
Okay. Um, so we'll do that in January, in some days.
And I guess it should be mentioned too, for the purpose of more different areas, not so much buildings. I have to go within the district, like, we wouldn't go and talk about the locker or the fine building or something, it's kind of more the area forms that have. So much.
I think, yeah, well. Speaking of the library, that's a mess. And it's kind of related to that, you know, so maybe like that library would come up, um.
Right, yeah.
Which would be okay, because it's National Register, so anyway. Uh, we'll do that. Um, cause I just feel like. In our monthly meeting, we have other things that we're wanting on it, we really suck the time.
Absolutely.
So next is, and I know a lot of the stuff I haven't even read, I haven't had time for you yet.
I'm only there.
You know, so. With the Carnegie Building, uh, I did talk with Mike about the Carnegie Building. And, um, but it's no longer being used at the library.
But it's automatically is.
Right now it is, so what they're using is for storage, so it is being used at the library, because they have to go back and forth to get the books, because.
Right.
Trailer.
Right.
But once Smith Memorial Hall opens up, and they have hired a new library director too, Mark Croftnick.
And by then, they've all cleaned up the pictures, this is the.
Not only that, but also, um. In determining the use of the building, might also. Play a role in whether it's eligible to be at the National Register, on the National Register. Though there is, you know, um, I did listen to. The Secretary of the Interior has sent you that.
Yeah, that's.
And use of buildings rehab kind of thing, and that is, you know, a valid thing to do, but it's how, how it is done, you know, and. I must say that. With the Smith Memorial Hall, the historical elements have been kept, so I'm sure. That when we move into the Carnegie Building, when whoever was in there, the historical elements will also be kept.
Oh, yeah.
I was.
Yeah, that would change.
In the building.
It's terribly. Besides finishing the second floor, okay, sorry, finishing the basement. Not, I don't know, any of the windows.
Right, right, right. So, you know, and the same with whole two, Carnegie, so the use of it really. Uh isn't gonna include that item thing, but that's what's to keep on, to keep in mind.
So that's, that, so maybe, but nineteen ten, but, um, so like right now, that's considered in the lower four corners.
Right, right.
That's also relevant when we talk about districts, the areas.
So. There are conversations too, like I had with my. Yes, considerations being given that the historical commission have a home there, so.
Oh.
So we are in a, we are in the mix.
In. So, about the society. They have, they have a house, we don't, that's true.
Well, people accept the permission and this is.
I did, before, before I could involve, I was like.
So?
No, 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 so this is a board that you have. Oh, okay, that'll do, that's, that sounds fun. But like, that I didn't want to be in this.
This funny Redsony Library going. Hopefully to the Historical Commission would. He got. It probably.
Yeah.
Part of it is, um. The use of the building, there is, you know, limited space available, you know, throughout the town. And having built someone in that building full time, like the commission, we wouldn't be there full time, so maybe a shared space with someone that had, is there full time, so that it's, you know. He, you're, you're continuing, you know, all of that stuff. There is probably space in there, I think, for a shared space.
Oh, definitely.
Cause you have like the, the meeting room.
You want, right, where, where the computers were.
Yeah.
And then the stacks.
Right.
And downstairs. Yeah, downstairs would need a lot of repair.
A lot.
What could be.
Be accessible right away, or they kind of like that. Because that, that's why the children's, um, children was there, but that was one of the problems, was lack of deep rest.
Yeah, so.
Or should, the historical commission, and also the public library. Maybe the public government has an extra space like for research related to history.
Yeah, incredibly.
I mean, so there's, you know, there's conversations out there, at least we're not the forgotten child.
But we're the priority.
So, we did get a letter from the Town Historic, um, and. Alright, I want to motion to take this letter out of order from the correspondence.
I meant to mention that we take the correspondence items four out of order. To bring it up to the discussion regarding the Carnegie Building under, uh, uh, item two. Point two.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Alright.
Alright, so basically, our, our letter. The letter from the Town Historic, and he's requesting that, um. That we consider that, that Carnegie Library building on Main Street. Be proposed for inclusion on the National Register of Historic Places. We have been talking about this throughout the past couple of months, and probably for the last year, I think.
First thing I thought of when I came on board, I was like.
Right, yeah, so it is, it is on our radar, um. I was kind of really hoping that. The lower four corners area form would be accepted, you know, as being eligible for consideration, because then it would.
That's right, going to.
Be longer, but, yeah.
Had the town went watching, I mean, I thought that was too much of a.
Right.
Too much thing, I guess, anyway.
So, and if that's, you know, if you get some research from facts about the different Carnegie libraries across the country. Uh, and we are very fortunate to still have one in our town. And, you know, it could be repurposed for town, town use, and that's true. And it would keep our heritage, and it is our goal for that historic building to be continuously recognized. Uh, so it is in the process of, in the process of re, working on the library, so, um. I guess that's basically our response.
And this almost, this part of the letter almost kind of has to be tabled, because we can't do anything with it until its uses completed, right? It's current use of the library, like, we, we can.
We could. But we have to get in there and we have to do the the interior pictures.
Right.
One of the questions, I'm quite sure, you know, it would be matter of adding to the. Form, form B for the library, so we would have to add pictures and descriptions to that for the interior. Uh, we would probably also have to talk about its repurposing. So that in itself.
I'm sure we wouldn't know yet.
Which we wouldn't know. You know, so if we look at the Secretary's interiors closely, I think those are gonna become our best friends.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. It'll be purposing, yes, it can be repurposed, so they need to know that before we start the process, I'm kind of thinking. Yes.
Intent to repurpose enough, or do they intend to know, want to know that people definitely, and what it will be, you know, I don't.
Right, so we have to research that. So I think, um.
Cause we're talking, this could only be, this might be a year out. At least.
Get more than that.
It's more. I mean, hearing you, we're talking. Does the Smith Hall's library is not gonna be open to twenty twenty five.
Right.
So you've got like a year and. A half, maybe, doesn't. Right. They didn't say when in twenty twenty five. At least it's back on the radar, you were just gonna be the back burner, at least it's back on the radar. That, I don't mean derogatory back burner, but like, we can't do too too much, we can do what we can, we can't. Be full steam ahead, or maybe we can based on whatever criteria needs.
I think we should do, maybe look at the um Secretary of Interior's. Guidelines for repurposing. See what they say.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, maybe the whole PDF chapter, just on that purpose.
I know they're so. Oh my gosh. We'll be expert by the.
I thought I was, until I started getting more, I was like, oh man, I do nothing to compare to like what I do on it.
Um, alright, so given guys to Marina's letter, I will reach out to her.
Thank you for, I mean, her, her information, I didn't know how many Carnegie. Were left, I mean, I I really enjoyed the letter, I just wish we could. I. We want her to know that we a hundred percent agree with six.
Cause there is the Carnegie Library in Berkeley.
Right. It's swamped ones, the, no.
Not sure, I'm gonna try. A Berkeley is, cuz I was on the Berkeley.
And that's true, and she was, it's true, not all, and not all Carnegie buildings are libraries. Like, you, you know, like, they, I mean, you might have a Carnegie building that's a, uh, a museum. Or or have been turned into, it's not like they all have to be libraries per se.
Um, I'll grab something and send it to her. Okay. Our walking tour pamphlet, and next. So this, I just did.
You doing edits to the one you sent out while I was?
No.
Oh, oh, no, no.
Looked at it.
No, that's fine, I just don't have the updated copy, that's all.
No, this is it.
Um. I have a question about this, so I was going to go out and start taking pictures of the current day. I, if I was doing this, like, I've done this on my own. With other houses and Zcom, or other buildings and around town, problems and stuff like that. But as a town. Board member, I didn't feel comfortable going outside someone's house and doing this without any kind of like. Do you need permission?
No, you do not need.
To take a picture of someone's, I mean, like, I could go to take a picture of this right now and put it on Facebook cause, you know, but like, I just as a. Being a, if I was just on my own, I. Pay her as much, but being affiliated with the town board, I did not feel comfortable taking pictures of these houses without permission. Or without, without knowing if I need permission.
So. Based on our experience with.
Yeah, I know, with sales. Right, that's from.
Pictures, what she does is. As long as you're not on the property. You can take pictures of of the house. As long as you don't step on the property. And she also notifies, um, well, actually, we sent a letter from the commission notifying the police department that. You know, she needs taking pictures when she is in the neighborhood with her car identified.
Es- especially if any of these become part of the pamphlet that we did.
Right, now like. Do we need current pictures, is the question.
Well, I guess it depends on what you, what.
Right.
You want the pamphlet to look like, I mean.
Because you're identifying by address.
Um.
Cuz I was looking at Tottenham Square Liberty and the walking tour.
And I, yeah, right, and I grabbed, or this is a checkup library, but these are free at some of the, sort of aside, these don't have side by side pictures. So this one is just of some of this Main Street. This one's a Somerset General, and this is of Somerset Village, sorry. I know, so that one's, that, these are mine, that you guys can look at, that's shit up my heart, just like. I just don't want anyone to think that, so that one, I think I got from. Somerset or Swansea, I think. These I grabbed when I was there the other day, like, so those are free that I grabbed, so these belong to, I've been wanting to me to like. Do whatever you want with that, I will, I, so that one you had.
It's from the.
But I did scan and photocopy all that. Digitally, so I mean, so I could have it for myself, I can also send to you, if you wanna see more of of what they did.
See, they just identify it by the address with the, with the historic pictures.
Right. I don't know if anyone here follows the, um. Old Colony History Museum on Instagram.
Yeah.
But they have, not every Thursday, but halftime, so that Thursday, what they'll do is. Those are gonna pitch it over top and green, and then you swipe right to see where the same exact spot looks like now versus where it looked like back then. That's not part of their brochure at all, that's just something separate that they did. So the side by side thing is, we certainly could, it just depends on what design we want to do with the pamphlet.
Right. Right. And basically to start with the pamphlet was for someone to. Have it, an accent that you'd be able to walk and move with the, you know, like say.
Hmm.
You know, this is the Old Colony Ward, so it's the Church Street, the Old Colony Museum Museum, stand beside it and just read briefly.
The guide according to what I sell guidance.
Right, right, right.
Speaking of that, I was at the seventeen twelve. Uh, diner or re- restaurant with my dad a while ago. Does this sign mean anything to anybody? So this was.
The war, this is, that's mine, yeah.
So who did that? And why, and I, I don't, so why is it there? I don't mean it in in a too sorry way, but like, I I just didn't know how it ended up there or who did it?
I think. I think Richard's.
I think, well, it is sort of, sort of the, it is like wharves, it, W H A R V S is the official name of the district, yes. It's like ninety nine. It's plural, yeah, cuz of war, cuz of this, that's a possible war. And there wasn't more than one, so.
Years ago, that was, that was up down there, and it.
Oh, exactly, that was actually outside.
It was, I don't know who made it, I do believe it was found like in a barn or a garage or something. Um. And it ended up at seventeen twelve, cause Bruce is. That was, and that is into history too. Um.
But there's no signature on it, I was in front of the shoulder, I think, I was ho- hoping to figure out who did it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
I was assuming you would know.
I can talk.
I I mean, more like, I care often because I think that.
Yeah.
That, utilizing that design. As a logo for the brochure or or some, why, even more than one district, but I mean, is something, I thought it was kinda cool. But I wouldn't wanna do it without attributing the artist, but if if it's known who it was, it may be.
I can talk to Bruce when I see him again. So basically, the the layout, I just put, you know, some brief info, anything for each house. Um, and some of the older pictures that I have, I know you have some other pictures too, Zach, or.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but I, but I, uh.
That might be clearer or better, and some of them I didn't have pictures of, so. I could've gotten tired too, Sam, and.
I, and this is kinda like the uh. Release form and all that kinda stuff where I started to get involved, I was like, I don't wanna get too involved with this and figure out, but I. Taking pictures of someone's house without asking, so. I, that's one thing I was gonna ask you guys tonight, if the houses that are there, do we know who lives in them?
Oh, yeah.
All all the, all the, all the ones that we wanna focus on.
Yeah, I think, well.
So we can reach out to them and say, hey, I mean, not, I would get knocked on the inside, but like, if I wanna get us a wrangle, but I might have to step. A little closer, I mean, obviously, like, from the road, you can take anything.
Yeah.
And I, uh.
Some people are gonna be kind of.
I I even, I don't know any, so, I mean, maybe I do, I just don't realize.
I don't think we'll need current pictures right now.
No, cuz you know why? If you're there, you see it coming.
Yeah.
The whole point I was saying, the whole guy is just here, it looks like.
Picture, we just give it to them.
Street level. Uh, yes and no, it's not always updated. And it's not always there as quality.
It's that, it was clear.
Cause like, we should do, there are some time where it's like, oh, the car were going down the mailbox on blur. But then there are times it's like, that's what my house looks like five years ago, you you know what I mean, so. You you can't, and and not. Somebody sent us an advertisement and they take a picture of a house. But it was, was, was right street.
Right.
Or across the street, probably.
Right. I think we should just, for the pamphlet itself, it seems to owe their picture, right, you think, see the, what it looks like now.
Right, right.
And then, so some of them like the Darius Henry House. I know there's a picture. Like at the Historical Society, these views, we can just, you know, attribute, uh, for to that. Uh. Some of them are more problem, nineteen twelve, but.
Some other town, there is Blackwood District, uh, Society Facebook, posted a. Artist rendering or picture of the wards that I had never seen before. I was like. I forgot, yeah. I forgot who or what it was, but I was like, oh my god, but I can't, I, how have I not saw the. So. This is a postcard. Steamed from the Eddie House, Dyke Mass.
Oh, does it have the, um, guesthouse on it?
So, and that's one of them, if you scroll, there's another one that's filled with water, and I I've never.
So they, that little house was there, where it was the guesthouse, so that they could go out and sit. And view the river.
But I couldn't believe that, of of all the browsing I've done, I just happened to be scrolling, I went, wait, that's tight. I.
Did you see, oh, was it on?
I saved that to my phone from Facebook. I I might have a screenshot somewhere, or, so I.
Alright, so I've seen this one before.
Is it the one that says?
It was the boat.
The black and white one?
This, oh, I've seen. That picture with the cannons, whatever they got, I've seen that.
Okay, and then there is. The, the bottom one. That actually shows the war, I mean, it's not utilized like that, it's almost like a. How else to call it, like, um, brilliant, oh, oh, looking, I.
Yeah.
I might not have been told it was brilliant, but I mean, I've never, I've never seen it.
He was with stones in the war too.
Right, cuz I mean, all the pictures you see are on the houses, but like, I've never seen anything of that angle at all before. But there are scenes from postcard, I have to like go back.
So, those would be actually good to add.
That's what I was thinking, because we have so much that, look, sorry. We have so much of the houses, but like, I saw like, I've been always looking for this angle, and I've never seen it before, and I just found it by accident.
Eddie House Plaza.
That's, I guess, that's right, that's, I was like, wait a second.
Well, Eddie House was quite a place to go.
This is near, this is where, where exactly.
It's up by that street.
The post, the post had to do with the Eddie House specifically. And this is, is a, a letter dated.
I've seen a copy of that one before.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
October fifteen eighteen ninety six. And it's from, it looks like it's, it's signed by. The. Address to. This friend Harry, I think. We could spend more time trying to recite the curses, but I was like, oh my.
So.
So like, the.
William P. Edit.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah, that's William P. Edit.
Oh, okay.
The W N, that's William.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought it was like a bit like an R, okay.
Yeah, they were the Brube, William. Right, right.
Well, I saw those two pictures, and I was like, I'm really good for this.
Yeah, so. Either you can send me the picture. Cause the only picture I, that I had was the one where you see the three wards all in a row. Okay, so we'll continue working on that.
Are there any artist renderings of the called Dyken's version of the Boston Tea Party? Because like, they are.
On the molasses, uh, molasses.
Yeah, because they are sketches of the Bonneville. Stick building. Part of Swansea a long time ago, it's no pictures, obviously, it's, but like. It's the photo of the reenactment. Of the molasses.
Right.
Here it is, I see, I haven't spoken, I'm. I haven't seen any kinda sketch, I mean, I've read so much about it, but I haven't seen, I just don't know if anyone's ever seen across any. Drawing. Is that a reenact? Yeah.
That's not.
Because that would be a good, that would be a good thing to include in the brochure too, because a lot of people might not know that, the houses, they might be. Oh, yeah, I've seen that postcard before, but a lot of them might not know. The actual history of the. Is there any other artist rendering of Francis Dyken? Yes, I think I've seen something somewhere. I've always wanted to, uh, hire.
Most of them are, most of what you see in Connecticut's state is a composite.
To the commission. Uh, right, I believe they, you know, from word out, that they probably think, yeah. I envision like a bust of Francis Dyken someday, somewhere, but give me a playground. Alright, we'll model off of you. And I've got a nice big time center, I love Dyken, where I'd like to take southeast, it's what not, every hour all over the world, it's that island thing. I'll put it in my.
Oh, okay. There we go.
I want, I want.
Alright, so we'll continue, um, working on that, so we have something. Maybe by square even. Right. Um. We're just for information on the Smith Memorial Hall, the work on the interior has begun. Um, BP students are doing some work, and some located are doing some electrical work. Um.
Make theories, done, be good.
We had, of course, the pillars and stuff still aren't done.
Did they decide what to do with the pillars that they can, they could reuse?
No, not yet.
Ooh.
Top of the gym.
Could we utilize those pillars as part of the time capsule, building up the same. I don't know how, I'm not handy by any means, but the wood from the, you know, I was trying to repurposing those pillars somewhere in the house in the building. If, if they're beyond use in any kind of form, could be stripped down the wooden, utilize that, so I don't. If I don't, I don't know how, I'm not handy yet, or at all, but. A tastic chunk?
Anyway, I talked, you know.
Right, yeah, it's more like, or like, um, it's another item, shit, more like siding for it, or. Or even if we asked for Dyken time capsule, any, or the, I don't, I just, just kinda follow that now, but.
Oh, kinds of possibilities, um. Don't remember any, uh, serial lighting pictures, I don't know what they would be with yet.
Okay.
And the library committee, uh, building committee will be separated. Or five. So, you know, things are starting to roll again. And the new library director does have experience with. Um, moving libraries. Good. And, um, he's also very interested in local history.
Where's he from?
He's from Lakehead, I think, he's from Little Bay.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, so he does a lot of, um, genealogy stuff.
Yes, it's. Is he the living in Lakehead?
Yeah.
Yes, we can thank him.
Yeah, yeah, we have three hundred rooms together.
Oh, wow.
No, you, really, I heard him speak before, so.
Wow. Wow.
I was very excited for the genealogy.
Did Jimmy know what's handed before you got his tradition?
I knew.
Oh, you did, oh, okay, oh, yeah.
So, okay. Um, we have, we received the inquiries from Stacy's side, so the project is a community survey update we stood. I submitted it to CPC, so they're gonna take care of that. We received one copy of all the final form bees, area forms and photographs of the. Part of buildings. Um, two copies of the final report and a flash drive of all the documents. And then C I sent a hard copy map, um huge, they did a really nice job this time. And I left it with Carrie to uh make a copy.
Alright, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, cuz they have the standing four nine seventy two. And directly. So she's gonna do that, we also will scan and send it to the accessories office. So they'll have it too.
How big is that? Come, think about the maps that I was saying, I didn't, didn't think of that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's big. It's. Good.
Huh.
I can't, yeah. Let's stand on the thing.
Just talk for a bit, I. Think about that. If we, if we get things more.
Are you working?
No, I'm off.
Okay, um, in the past, what, the past survey that we did. We made two color copies, it evolved printing. So we made color copies for, cuz we keep one as a archival copy, those still count for. One to the assessor board, because they have people coming in, a lot of times to ask information about historicals. And. One for us. So we made three notebooks altogether. I'm gonna try and see if we can fit these streets into our existing survey notebooks that we have from last time. Um.
How many pages?
Ninety two pages.
Only because I think it would probably be same, it can't be conversion, any kind of copy, it's worth six.
Yeah, we're gonna use the balls, um.
It's on that we gotta use all those.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I heard the topic today. Thank you for the noise, you know, I'm walking, yeah, oh, hello there. So we said, it's like ninety two pages, it said it'd be about fifty dollars, um. For color copies for what we need, it's only four because I'll have um. One with the store siding, one with the wood pickers, you know, for that player. Um.
Does he supply binders?
No, we have binders.
Okay, I was like, I have some at home too, the like basic ones that are not being used.
Alright.
So we need binders.
Depending on how big yours, cuz I was thinking to combine these streets.
I mean, they're. Like, what's the difference there? I mean, they're like, they're like.
Okay.
Two bridges, two bridges.
Okay, we do have some. But what I was trying to do was put these streets from north side in the same notebook as. Uh, the previous ones that we did, so it's like all in one slot. In one notebook, if I can, you know, fit. I think we should.
What the average figuring, average figuring binder, the one it's binder holds, how many do you? Oh, yeah, this was, I mean, this thing is, this mess.
Okay.
I have more than one, I can.
Alright.
So, yeah, you guys.
Okay, where do we get, okay, so. We also did thumb drives for. What do you mean, hold on, the accessories office. The library, and I made like the library and the planning office, like a directory of the streets that were included. Cuz we didn't have a hard copy of all the forms, but they had the digital access, they monitored it. So.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is, I'll go and see if I can get those um. Thumb drives back, I can download the P B X to those, see if they have the current ones, and also uh update the streets. So that way we have all of the streets.
Yeah, so thumb drive is so freaking cheap nowadays.
Yeah. Uh. If. It's not, you know, in January, hopefully you'll have that all figured out for January. And by Friday, we'll do it in one month or something.
Uh, I remember when I was in eighth grade, your desktop publishing, you could buy flash drive. And it was a fifty bucks for like.
Really great.
Now we're giving away. That, like, you know, some of this, like.
Okay, so. To go ahead with the printing, let's just leave a motion to um have the color copies printed. At um the ball printing.
Uh, like the motion that we had with color copies of the. Uh, survey forms. After all, color copy and two the color copies.
Two color copies.
Yeah, not that it's um, it's around the, not fifty dollars.
Not just, not just fifty three hour.
That's the motion.
Second.
On paper, uh. Yeah, the community wide survey continuation. In my conversation with uh Stacy. Instead of doing great big projects that cost us twenty five thousand dollar a year. Drop of a hat. Um, I asked her about, you know, maybe do five half or smaller project, she does. You know, and in this way, one of the problems that. Has happened with, you know, not only us, but other towns too, in updating your surveys is that. In the seventies, they did the big thing when it all started, like nineteen seventy three, then there was a huge update like in the two thousand, around two thousand. Nineteen eighty, two thousand in there somewhere. And then there's, there was nothing done, so. In order to keep the um identification of our historical properties going, if you do a smaller. Five to seven properties a year. Continues our survey, you know, identifying historic properties, and it keeps it in the cycle so that nothing. There is a turn of hundreds.
Every hundred years.
Right.
So she does do, I sent that copy of the contract, um. If we're doing like under twenty seven, um, under twenty surveys a year. The cost is three hundred and fifty dollars per form. And um.
Does it include areas or just properties? Like just individual?
She says seven form bees. That's a question we're gonna ask.
Is that would be a huge plus. Cuz I feel like our, it seems like our focus and our. Passion, so to speak, seems to be areas more filled in buildings because there aren't. And like as um. Myra mentioned, there are what, five historical buildings up there?
That's on all.
Is that right? I mean, I'm right, right, so at this point, like. It seems like we're more the areas that are dropped right now. Not saying a lot of buildings and houses aren't important, but like if she can be a resource for areas and districts, I think that would be. Yeah, I don't know what.
Question.
I don't know if she considers that it won't go small project or not, but.
I know that she was organizing all both the the survey projects, um. It wasn't doing the buildings, but some of them were because of the area, the buildings aren't as detailed. And it's um like if you do um. The school street one, you know, gets a description, a historical description, it's not as detailed as if you had the form bee, say like on your house. You know, with more detail to it. Um, so that is a way, but I can ask her, that's a good question to ask. Is this something that we would be interested in pursuing?
I would say there's areas, like personally a hundred percent, especially where. You know, we have so many that are. Kind of looking more realistic as we go on as opposed to unrealistic. So she can be a resource, because she says, how about this, instead of doing seven properties, I'm gonna do two areas for it, I would say do it, well, I mean. I'm speaking out loud here, but like, usually I can. Give you guys resources and help you guys get those in motion as opposed to a house, I'm looking at. Again, nothing against the house, but our passion to try to get these areas. In there or say we're fill the the library eventually, when we're worried for that.
Right, I can ask them that, the other thing is.
Cuz the work is great, I mean, it's.
Yeah. And the truth is, probably. The only um conservation consultant that is still doing this kind of work right now. One or one of the few, because a lot of the people that used to do the form bees and all of that have retired. And there's, a- again, it's a field where people are coming in quickly.
I would see a screen that I, two weeks ago, just finished really going through her first one.
Mm-hmm.
And then all of a sudden, I look in the inbox and we sent out this update too. So the fact that in that time, she already bumped out the update, I was like, my God, I, assuming all she's doing is that, but still she's not.
No, she's not, you know, quite a seamless place, yes. Uh, we'd also have to show, run this um contracted by. Town administrator to prove that we've stated specifications for our contract. Um.
So we probably need a little more specific. Items that we want.
I can, I. I'll ask her about the area forms, um. I can send this to Mike and ask him to review it and say, you know, is there anything else that Clayton would require to have?
Hmm.
And then it comes such such like the funding for it.
Have you heard?
Yeah.
Is she, is she local?
She's not.
Uh, she's from. Yeah, Pupkin to Pupkin to.
Oh, please, should. So you know, shoot far, if you are especially in.
She was, yeah.
Or assume or something, that I I I was not here, or like, or you're in, you know, virtually.
She, um. You know, probably would give some, but we probably have to pay, pay her to come and talk to us, but. Cuz in here, she says there would be like seventy five dollars now, but she could come and consult with us.
Or e- even if it's on Zoom and we, if you don't want to travel, we talk to her for a half hour, when we have that special meeting. Whenever that is, that would be kind of cool. Even if it's not about area specifically, it's just just this kind of.
Any questions? So I can ask her if she'd be available for questions on these forms.
Whether it's in person or or is it? I mean, seventy five bucks for an hour is, I mean. I mean, that, I mean, really, I mean, that that would, that's that would be great.
We have it in a professional, technical.
Yeah, oh, that's. Perfect.
Alright, so. I'll reach out to her all around it by my, the other part is, you know, um. We could go to the P P C for funding for a smaller amount of money, I mean, they they've been very. They funded both of the other two projects, one was, you know, a grant, fifty percent reimbursement. Um. The second one, they funded the whole thing with five thousand, so. And they're very, you know, aware of the importance of the the history of Dyson, just good. Anyone have any other questions for that?
No, between now and tomorrow, I think fifteen more probably. Now, but now, I know it's an option, my mind's been spinning.
You have a problem, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, historical marker program, did we ever?
Okay.
Uh, the sign maker.
Yeah.
Okay, cuz I went there like five weeks ago to uh to push. For the market to be to be completed, and I was promised I'm gonna call me, so I waited for five weeks, no call. So I called him this morning, Dr. Rich, the owner, said, Rich, do you remember me? Alright, hello. Oh, yes, it's actually, it's ready. Well. I'm gonna get done by then. I didn't get an email, no phone call, and he said, he sent an email, I checked my spam, my junk folder, nothing. Nothing whatsoever, I apologized, said, Rob, I'm so so sorry, I shouldn't be calling, yeah, I should have called.
Yeah, I I, you know, it was fine for two weeks, maybe if you call.
Find another sign maker.
Well, and that one that I was gonna mention about the sign maker. Because I asked my dad, who did the signs for the town hall? Because the the two new signs that are up front, the little ones, I don't know, what did they? Um.
Paul Pacheco.
Paul Pacheco. For, I don't know, I I don't know they did it for free, but like I said. Man, we should get him to do our circle markers, I know my dad's like certainly more than I'm I'm sure, I'm sure he would. Yeah, if he could, I'm not saying, he, my dad did not say he would do.
That's what I'm just saying, that's why, this is why I went December sixth, start the site, it's per Pat also suggestion, which would be with this guy John. He can give you information about, you know, their markers, cuz they just launched a market, a market book a much longer. Um, so I can give only information to John, he's gonna contact me up with this sign maker. So we'll see, but Paul Pacheco is an alternative.
Right.
But this guy Rich, who's sitting around in Rainham, he said, you know, Robert, pick it up, it's ready. So the question is, how are we going to pay for it? Can I just pay with my own check?
No, you should in do an invoice and and we need doubling that, you should do an invoice to the Dyson Historical Commission.
Well, we did the frame probably, right, the same kind of process?
Yeah. And. We'll prove the invoice.
Okay.
But and he's a new vendor, so he'll need a doubling nine form to submit, yeah, to the um to the town. You can send that with the invoice if he wants.
I don't know if it's all white on the sign, a new sign, I think there probably is, right?
I don't think so.
No.
No, there's no lights up, no.
It's nice, none of you guys have seen it, but.
I think prime time just got this.
It's kind of, it's almost the same shade as if you're applying.
Um, did Chase Street people get their signs?
No, that's a problem because they're so slow, this guy is so slow.
So maybe we can.
Yeah.
I mean, we we got to have the work, isn't it, we can't.
Yeah, I know, but she's so damn slow, I mean, you see like, lot of positive reviews, like four point nine, but there's one lady upset. One star because she is so slow.
Wow. Don't we say it's a four green value, he's, you know, like. I mean, I was, I was like, I've come like four times already in the last three months.
So he got. Old Town Hall's done.
Old Town Hall's done, but I didn't put it under new orders.
So we never put in um for um one fifty Chase Street or.
No, because it was supposed to be uh the applicants who should be like interacting with with the sign maker. But I think, I think it's better to just find somebody else, they're so.
If you're not satisfied with.
Yeah, what is Paul Pacheco's uh business?
That one, I'm serious.
Let's see, he taught, I know, I mean, I know he did my dad's campaign, I I first knew him, it's been my dad's campaign signs. And and then I asked my dad to give the signs out front. I I didn't know that that warp sign was him too, apparently it wasn't, but then I asked, oh, yeah, who did the signs? And he said, oh, yeah, it was Paul. Well, you know, it was definitely Paul Pacheco, but.
Right, yeah, actually, he did a good job at the best time.
Yeah, cuz I worked with Paul and the town clerk and the seal to make sure the seal, the town seal looked right.
Is there an issue behind, do we know the issue behind the seal?
A seal?
Yeah.
It appears. In the nineteen twelve bicentennial book. It's it's on, it's on the cover of that. But I think originally it was a little bit earlier.
But it's the front, I didn't even know it was the front page of this.
I probably can't remember one, but if you notice this one, the water kind of flows up a little or it's out of angle. Then the original ones are, I can send you some information on that, just so you know, I can send it to everyone.
Water here, it doesn't even have any currents.
Yeah.
Cuz what I I actually did, I actually made a wallpaper where I took the outline of the Dyson, of the time Dyson. And I imposed the color of our flag and the seal in it.
Um, so. Okay, so you'll get Paul's information to the back?
Yes, sure, yeah, I I I got, I got all this.
He's on one of the street. I remember that. Alright.
That's that.
That's that, so we still have Chase Street marker hanging out there.
So what have, what's been paid for nothing yet technically to him? Which will also be due all of the work is done. Which, which you want to have with his comment?
No, usually what happens is like the people who ordered the sign for their house, they're paying for, so they deal with the. The vendor.
My concern to that is that, is that, I know it's not work time, but I know how great it makes us work, but. That's who we recognize.
Right, right.
People who maybe at first were begrudgingly, you know, alright, I'll do it, and now here it is being like, think of whatever new, you know, I I type it, I don't know.
What marker is this one that we've been waiting for? Dyson Old Town House, yeah.
This cover.
Like a historical marker for the house, for the other building.
Good.
Because I was gonna say, you know, we should consider paying for schoolhouse, cuz we have two of those next, yeah.
I'm sure Paul Pacheco would love to do that.
Probably, I'm sure you've shown a photo, the one that we already done, I'm sure he can replicate it. I know, I'm sure we've filmed a photo of the one that we already done, I'm sure we can replicate it to make it fit within our, you know, the ways.
Right, and we've got pictures and we've got all the information that we need. Alright, so let's do that for the next meeting. Any public input, no public input?
I think we, I think we have so much to talk about, so much to go over, and this few people, your name is?
Uh. Historical maps of Dayton, Zach, you can.
Yes, so what I've been doing is. I have scanned in, now that I know Carrie has a scanner, um. There are a bunch of old maps that we have that are only hard copy. And I would think I always wondered if we could do it digitally. They don't really exist anywhere. I mean, the. Uh elaborate plumbers into the plum wealth have. A couple, but not a lot. So basically, I met with, I took some of the hard copy ones and I have a pretty high, not a big scanner physically, but a higher. Power relative scanner. And I've. Photocopied and scanned into these maps. I did it as a PNG file and a PDF file. Because people might, you know, thought. Do them differently. Um especially what keeps my interest was the bird's eye maps. Because if you look in the Library Congress and uh their Commonwealth, they have. Four different time periods of out of dark, of bird's eye, historical bird's eye map. I could not find any of Dayton anywhere, so. I was looking at the pictures from the fire car address. And I saw a. Part of the person, I said, where is that person? And Pat, I said, oh, we have it. So I. Really? So I scanned that in, um.
They're from eighteen eighty-one.
Really? So. This is one of them right here. So the more you zoom in. The clearer it is. So, do you guys recognize that? So I basically scanned this in. But like, if with the high resolution scanner that I have, you can zoom in pretty damn good. And see the detail, but these maps don't exist digitally as of right now, anywhere. Um. So the one that I started doing was, so this one is.
That's Dayton.
And then the other one we have, it's more like that sepia color.
One, mm.
That. My aunt showed me a free Photoshop kind of that's. So this one I had to do in pieces, I didn't want to fold it up too much. Uh so like. I scanned it in black and white, but now I'm gonna talk to Carrie tomorrow.
Yes, Carrie's making a copy of that for me tomorrow, I mean, already.
The, the map that I was having on?
Yeah, yeah.
So I've been pointing with it and says that, do I do it in color and then edit to black and white, or do I scan it in black and white? So. This one's taking me more time to go there and figure out how exactly I want to do it. But the funny thing is that the one that's on Wikipedia, that's that low resolution one. That's not either of these two. So there's a third out there somewhere. But.
Send me the picture of it on Wikipedia.
Who did the entry? It's so, not every image is on Wikipedia that has the, the, the computer ballistic. This one does not. Who wrote that entry? Well, it's not so much the entry, you can, I can write the entry, anyone can. Everybody can edit.
Yeah, yeah.
So this, if you were to go, if you Google Wikipedia, if you, sorry, if you Wikipedia Dayton. This is the, so this is, this is called View of North Dayton Village. Eighteen eighty-one, which is the same year of the map that we have. But if you look at the angle, it's not the same map. It's very, very close, but. It might be a different time, so, but she was that. So what's interesting is the one that Pat has, I noticed in the corner. It has uh courtesy of. Is it some bank in Somerset, I think?
On them, I have to look at it closely. See if that one's.
Is that on Wikipedia right now?
Yeah.
So like, you can zoom in on it, but if you look, so see how zoomed in I am? But look how crap, sorry, pop on my English, look how poor quality that is compared to mine. It's, frankly, this is a different picture. But see how, you know, that, so see, so this, that's me, I'm with an HP printer scanner. But it's, it's nothing super high tech.
Yeah.
But like, look how detailed that is, and it's not looking like I did, it's not a skill I have, it's just how, how good the scanner is. But I don't know who uploaded.
No.
There's no name.
Oh, no. Interesting. So now that, um. Zach has started working on the maps, I've been working on maps because I have copies of maps. From eighteen fifty-one, eighteen fifty-eight. Um eighteen ninety-five, I found the caprices that they came from, so we have the sources where they were from. We have the source and date for those, um. So I.
So and, and these I also did start there, so these are hits, these, these were fairly easy, cause they're not visually as. Complex. So one reason why I wanted to do is a second, that would be to load up that service, but. It's, I think it's cool to overlay these maps onto the current, like, good. So what I do, I screenshot the area view of the same area.
Mm-hmm.
And then you could overlay the map onto it to see like what's changed. So I did the same thing with um Crescent Park, North Island. So I took the Sanborn and Ro- and Rocky Point. I took the maps of like the fire insurance maps a long time ago that show like all the rides. And I superimposed that over the current satellite view. And it's pretty cool to see like, oh, so that house, that's where that ride was and stuff like that. So the one reason why I wanted to do it, I asked Pat. Where I can get these maps, I think it would be cool to do the same thing, but for Dayton, so you can look at the. Maps of, uh. Mount Hope, uh and, and superimpose it over what it looks like today. Oh, so my house is square, that factory was, it's, it's. But it's, it's, it's pretty cool, you know, that, that's one thing that I started to do with all this and to make a digital archive for us and the town, because. The digital maps that are online right now, it's where it puts it up there. If no one puts it up there, it's not gonna exist.
Yeah, right.
So if no one has, so one of the only Dayton ones that's online is, it shows the. Map of the railroad from Somerset to Dayton, and that's really cool, but there's not a lot of digital Dayton maps out there from a long time ago. That. Like, I mean, like, like, so that that bird's eye one. If you Google, you know, uh illustrated bird's eye maps, you'll find. Somerset, you'll find three from Attabar. You'll find, I mean, they're amazing to look at. But I've never found any of Dayton. Because no one's uploaded. That's why, you know, it's just, no one's had them or no one's had or. So I was like, well, why don't we do it? Why don't we have a, you know what, on our website or links or, so that's one. These digital archives only exist if someone doesn't.
Right.
But you have to have the hard copies to do it.
So that's something that. Once you get, kind of like, put them to the links to um. Our town's website page and also on Facebook.
Yeah.
Awesome. Awesome.
Oh, my god, I'm gonna ask my parents, I don't know what's up. We'll give you three years old.
I'm just wondering, you make these, so keep working at it.
Oh, yeah.
The CPC report, um CPC met in October, October nineteenth. As you all know, the library is awarded, they'll have helpful council facilities standing up two hundred thousand towards each back for. The main, two or seven Main Streets, moving along the hall. So that and that will be returned to CPC again. Some discussion about the details and how. The dollars will be credited to what accounts, because like we have our. Historical account. And the unreserved, so the percentage is not, they're gonna do that, they were working on, uh with the town accountant. Um. The, I don't know, the conservation of the historic vital records, you remember Mark Pachico's project that he was doing is. Uh being completed. Uh last I knew, when I talked to Shara and. Her name, Becky. Um, I think that's her name. Um. The folks were at the document center being, you know, scanning and cleaning all of that. Uh CPC didn't meet in November and. I don't think there's any disappointment. And. Nobody has anything else. Our next meeting is January night, and January I'll have a schedule of our meetings ready, so it's the second Tuesday. Um, but I'll make a whole schedule for the year. And that's it.
And I guess the, uh to go, to be back on that. Do you wanna work session regarding areas which you could be before, I mean, I'm happy before that, but. Um. I don't know who would, would wanna be involved, and I know I, I definitely do, but we shouldn't. We wouldn't want anyone to, like, they have to read, if some of the obligations, I. Can only commit to about one Tuesday once, and wouldn't want anybody to feel like, well, you have to go, cause it's not, you know what I mean?
Right.
It's, it's not, I mean, that would be motions and made, it's more. Talking, brainstorming.
Right.
Researching, so those who aren't into that, don't want to do that, or just wanna come and just watch, that's fine too, not watch, but I mean.
Right, right. If that's kind of allowed, so that we can move over and come forward and make the recommendations, you know.
But that would be a posted meeting.
Yeah.
So how, like, how soon and, like, we couldn't decide to do it next, or I'm not saying we would do it next, so it's like, how soon in advance could, would we have?
Eight hours.
Or hours?
I've kind of waited January, then we get to the problem.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, for sure, right?
Wait until for the work session that we did, where. Yeah, we'll, we'll pick some things on January night. So.
And hopefully more people will be in attendance at that meeting to see who else would want to be here.
Right. It's a huge project.
It is, and the thing is, because of, it's motions aren't being made, it could be two people, like, show up. It's not, it's not, well, we can't meet, we have to have three people, whether that's more, what is, right, it's not, it's not, we'd be voting, I mean, saying anything, we feel like. And any discussions that maybe, oh, we might wanna make a, we would not.
We would.
We would wait and present it at the after.
Send it out, yeah, yeah.
Like, that's obviously the forty B, so like, when there's a three board member. One person will go to these work sessions with the fire team to talk about the fire apparatus or something like that. Well, all the board members don't go to that meeting.
No.
But then this person will come to the regular meeting and say, hey, we met on Thursday, we talked about this, what do you guys think? So if, I mean, my, I kind of agree with you on this one the same way, where, yeah.
Right. It's just a, a way to, to muddle through all of that stuff, all that information. That I don't know about you, I, I always have great intentions, I can sit down and do it, sit down and do it, and then like, oh. Seven o'clock, I'm going back.
Yeah, for, for me, my problem is the focus, cause I look at one thing, and the next thing I know, I'm looking at the history product, so like, no, go back to the exact way you're doing it. So it's almost, it would help, it's not the interest, it's just that, like, they're just so, so much that you just kind of go off and rattle, so it's. I think it would be the best way to do is like, we're sitting there focusing on.
Okay. Anything else? You know, did you hear a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second, second, on my favor.
I'm certain.
And we are adjourned and we.
Bye, Pablo.